Town of Log Lane Village, notice of special meeting, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. The time is six ten P M. Two oh two Birch Street, Log Lane Village, Colorado, eight oh seven oh five. At any meeting, the potential exists that an executive session pursuant to C R S twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four. To discuss such things as litigation personnel matters, property transactions, conferences with attorneys, security matters, or any protected information may be called. Roll call?
Naomi? Deli?
Here.
Melissa?
Here.
Agent? Josie?
Here.
Robin? Angie?
Here.
And if we could stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so today we are here for a special meeting. And so we are gonna have a presentation from our auditor, David Kaufman. I didn't get anything. I like to have a hard copy though. Thank you. Maybe you wonder, Robin and Naomi too.
So my name is David Kaufman. I'm from Lejean Kaufman Peterson. We performed the audit for the Town of Log Lane Village this year. Thanks for having me. And I will kind of go through what the process is and what why we have to do this and that kind of thing. So first off, the town has a requirement with the state of Colorado, as most people know, provided an annual audit report to the state auditor's office as part of your per v. a. local governments, units within the state. And so this will suffice that requirement. Once we get it approved tonight, then we can go ahead and get it submitted on your behalf, our due date is at the end of this month. So we're looking to kind of get that done. Actually, I need to get that. I just remembered, you guys were late last year, I think it was in October, that it got filed. So that is unknown to me at the time, and I thought we could file for an extension, normal extension still. However, the extension was denied when we applied for that. So we are actually late at this point of getting it in. So what that means is now that we're kind of hoard, we kind of know what's going on. As long as we get you filed by the end of July of next year, we should be fine.
Okay.
So do we need to vote and approve this tonight?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's why we had to have a quorum here.
So Dan, we don't have that on our agenda. Can we make a motion to add that?
It says consideration, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you have the ability to approve, disapprove, discuss, table, but yes, you have the authority to approve it.
Okay.
Okay. So the audit process, we gain access to your books and records that were compiled for twenty twenty-four. It's the time period where we not do this calendar. And you guys in-house prepare a financial report. We take those records, we go back and we confirm balances, we make sure that the council here is working on a knowledge, with knowledge of the financial beings of the town. So maybe you guys are involved in major decisions, whatever it is, whether it's applying for a grant or approving a project or things like that, anything that would be a financial type decision is what we're looking at. Improving who the signers are to bank accounts, those types of things. And we do do some testing where we go back and make sure that the proper people are signing checks and and that there's approval of the payment of bills and those types of things. For our report for twenty twenty-four, we didn't find any abnormal algorithms or kind of systems. So it seems to be working. Should the council here is operating as you should as far as financial considerations go. So we're issuing a unmodified report as far as that goes. So what I will do, I don't like to read numbers to you. Mostly you guys have seen the numbers that are represented here, but I will go through and kind of tell you exactly what we're reporting on. I see you guys have somewhat familiar with the financial report that's being sent to the state. So as you're aware, let's go. So the first page behind the table of contents is our independent auditor's report. And basically, this just states the first paragraph that we are auditing the Town of Log Lane Village, year twenty twenty-four. That second paragraph says that in our opinion, that this is a fair representation of the of the town. And we talk about that we, the third paragraph talks about that we're following the auditing standards within the United States to form our opinion. That next section where it says responsibilities of management, that would be this room. And basically, your responsibility is to put an accounting system in place and make sure that that's and to follow up and monitor that system to make sure that it's operating as it should. And down below, our responsibility, and then it kind of continues next page with some of the the bullet points from our theoretical standards. But basically, this says that we're gonna follow our theoretical standards. We're providing assurance on the financials to make sure that they are within the accounting standards that are in place at this time. And then on the second page, it also tells that if we ran into any, we're not designing our system to detect fraud or anything like that. But however, if we run across that due to, because we're, when we sample things, we go to a sample of small two to three percent of the transaction. So it's not like we're seeing everything. Under required supplementary information, one of the things governmental units have to provide in their audit report is comparison to budget numbers, which are not more than part of the financial statements. And the other thing that it's talking about here is if there's a report that's provided by management that's included in here, that we kind of look over and make sure that it guides with the overall financial report. And so this is saying that that information is provided. And then also, there's a local audit finance report that's attached to that that's prepared by the transparency. So starting on page three is that management's discussion and analysis that I just mentioned, that this is a report that is a representation of the town. It kind of is, it kind of gives more of a financial highlights. These are not words from the auditor. They're more words from the town, kind of supposed to be kind of a layman's version of the financial statements for review. To kind of be able to read through it, all of the accounting. So that goes through page ten. And so on page eleven is our actual financial statements where we start showing. And this is your statement of net position. And what this represents, and for those of you familiar with like a four profit here. This is where you'll find like total balances for cash, investments, different types of receivables, your fixed assets, depreciation and those types of things. And then down in the bottom section, you'll see which constable balances. So this is kind of more of a snapshot of times. This is what all your balances were at the end of December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. The different columns and the governmental activities, this would be your general fund and your conservation fund. The business type activities would be where you would be the focus from your water sewer or trash funds. When governmental accounting, they look at those, because each one of them is its own business, they're kind of supposed to be running those as a business, which is general funds where it's more collecting tax dollars and providing benefits to the citizens. So the next page is our, so these first two pages we're looking at are what's considered prepared, they're generally accepted accounting principles, governmental accounting, running to a public different basis of accounting. So this would be more comparative to how you would see a full profit business payment for financials where capitalizing, act that's depreciating, recording loans, I mean, filling your payments on that loan. Whereas under governmental accounting basis, you whenever you purchase something rather than capitalize and appreciate it, you just expense it all this year. And if you get a loan, it's just recognized as revenue this year. So it doesn't really give the reader an idea of you know, what assets the town has or anything like that when you look at it. So this page here is our statement of activities. So this would be our operating revenue and expenses under that generally accepted accounting principle method. You kind of read it, it's kind of confusing, but it reads across, nothing is down. So that first section is again the governmental general fund, which includes your general government, public safety, which would be like these public works, which is your streets. And then there was some other missing aside, because it don't, don't fit any of the general categories. These are all, these categories on the side are all standardized between every governmental unit. So if you go and you look at a you know, a county or another city or something like that, they're all going to show public works, public safety, those types of things. That allows the, like the state government to kind of roll everybody up into one and say, Colorado does this much in public works. And then the business type activities, we have the different funds that are run there. And again, it shows you that first column, there's all the expenditures for the year. And then basically collected any charges for services would be your fees that you're charging for the different functions. And then as those come over and you hit the governmental activities and you come down, you'll see the different taxes that are collected. And then three lines up from the bottom, and we'll see under the general governmental activities, we're showing a net positive change in position for the year of three hundred and sixty-six thousand six thirteen. And then for the business type activities, there was a positive increase in net position of forty-six eight thirty-four. So now for the rest of the report, sorry, page thirteen, we're talking about the traditional government of New York County. And so this is where we show the balance sheet for governmental funds. And again, this is very similar to that net position page minus any fixed assets and depreciation and those types of things. So you'll see the general fund there, which includes the general government, the public works and the public safety departments. And then the conservation trust fund, which is basically the lottery money in parks and jerseys.
So how does grant money work into this? Oh, wait, that was for twenty, never mind. That was this year. When we received, received that, right?
That's this year. It'll be on next year.
So I, what type of grant are you going to?
It's a government grant for.
From the health department. We.
Yeah.
Yeah, state, state money. And it came in through the health department. We got it. It's a beginning grant to put forward all of our stuff to get a larger grant to renew our parks. To renew our parks and stuff. But this money, we have to spend this money. You know what I'm saying? We have to spend this money to get that money. Yeah, it's one of those things.
Yeah. So so basically, I could show you as we go. You wouldn't have seen that yet.
Yeah.
So then, so on this page, what we do is we come down and we get our at the bottom of the total, if you follow the total governmental funds down and you get to the one million five seventy-seven oh seventy-five, it's like four of the numbers up from the bottom on the right. That's our total fund equity for governmental funds, which is the general fund and the conservation fund. So then in order to tie that back, there's a reconciliation process we do here to show how that matches the GAAP basis or the general accepted accounting principle basis. So you'll see here are differences between the two. Are the capital assets, the three point one million, which I mentioned earlier. And then we do for your pension fund. This one's a little hard to explain. They do an actuarial report on the pension fund. And it goes out for, I think, a thirty-year period. And then they figure out what they think is supposed to be paid out, and then they bring it back to today's numbers and try to determine whether it's underfunded or open funded. And so the theory is, is if it had to shut down today and pay it out so that everybody is paid, how much would you have to put in? And so your, your share was at sixty-one thousand. So it's according to their actuary report, thirty years from now, we're, you're going to be about sixty-one thousand dollars short of your share of the pension fund.
Do we need to do something different?
No, it has nothing to do with you. It's all how, it's all run within the pension fund. Some years this may run as a surplus, some years it may run.
My husband's 401K kind of works like that too. It says, oh, you need this much in here. You need to deposit this much of your paycheck to get to here when you retire.
Yeah. And so this is kind of more of an estimated kind of number that they put in there. It derives, a little history. I don't know. I lose track of years. So to me, five years might have been ten years ago. So but at one point in time, there was I think it actually came in after the two thousand eight stock market kind of crash, after the housing thing. They, there were lots of pension funds, Teamsters pension funds and those types of things that were heavily invested in those funds. And they determined at that time that they're not going to have enough money to pay all these people's pensions. And so they said, well, who's responsible for that? And so then they decided that, well, maybe we should, you know, ultimately, it may come back on and employer, we don't know. And so to be safe, the accounting industry said, okay, well, we want the actuary reports on these funds. And then we're going to go back and make these municipalities show. So so basically, that's kind of where that came from, is they're trying to show if there would be possibly any liability, how much it would be. And so it has nothing to do with what you're doing. It's kind of just more good by. So then we move on to page fourteen. So this one here is in governmental basis. It just shows total revenues, total expenditures. These numbers are going to look a little different than what we looked at before, just because of some of those accruals and depreciation and those types of things versus actual expenditures that were made during the year. So you'll see here, it shows a net increase, three lines up on the right of five thousand seven thirty in the general funds, general governmental funds. And then on page fifteen, we show reconciliation between those, two different. And remember, I mentioned earlier that we showed a three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars net positive. And now we're on this one fifty-seven hundred dollars. So we're like, what's the difference? Well, the first basis that showed the three hundred and sixty-six was only taking the depreciation expense of four, of one, sorry, hundred and forty-three thousand four sixty-three, whereas the governmental net number, I said, the right expenses off when we do them, well, we had five hundred and four thousand dollars worth of room work done in twenty twenty-four. That's all extended in this, in that year. Whereas in the other basis, we're capitalizing that and writing it up over a certain period of time. So those are the differences, the two methods there. So now on page sixteen, we jump into the business type or proprietary funds. And you'll see there's a column there for each of the funds, for the water, the sewer, and the crap. So the thing to note on these funds, the water fund and the trash fund, if you look kind of in the middle under the liability section, you'll see that section that says due to other funds. Both of those over in the past years have operated, I guess, in the negative. And the general fund has kind of just made up the difference in cash. So each of those funds actually owe money back to the general fund. And and I do, I do believe, remember, there's a place in here, they did get, they did use from the prior. So we're moving in the right direction. It's just the base of the fill that negative number left like it was cash on the first line and the crap on it shows the number zero. On page seventeen is our statement of revenue expenses and changes in net position for each of those. And so you'll see three lines up the bottom, we're showing a net positive in each of the three bonds. Total net positive over all three of forty-six thousand three thirty-four. And unlike the general fund, these funds, we don't ever show it under that governmental basis of accounting. It's always the whole GAAP basis, because we're supposed to treat it as businesses. Page thirteen, another report that we don't see from the general fund, but we do see for the business type funds, is what's called a cash flow statement. And so what this means is, is just trying to look at where does the cash come from, where's it go, you know, how did we get an increased cap in here, what happened? So you'll see, basically, doesn't really show, it's kind of in the middle where it's a net increase, decrease in cash and cash equivalents. And water fund shows thirty-eight dollars and the sewer fund had a net positive of a hundred and fifty-two thousand. And then trash shows zero. The water and trash, I had mentioned earlier that they are paying that back. And where you see that is up under, it's like a second grouping, where it says cash flows from capital and related financing activities, and it says advanced to from other funds. It shows that the water fund paid back ninety-four thousand dollars during the year and the trash fund paid back seventeen. So they don't show that they increased their own cash, but they did pass some cash back to the general fund.
So eventually they'll get that paid back to the general fund and then it'll start showing the positive numbers.
That's the idea. Yeah. Yeah. As long as those can be managed and can and operate in a capital positive, after it should be fine. That's the end of the basic financial statement report. And so then on page nineteen, we start the notes to the financial statements. These are just kind of descriptive things of some of the different accounting calls and that are used from the financial to put together, tell a little bit about the town. I'm not going to talk there, but I'm not going to read through all these. It just talks about who you are, a basic financial reporting. These are all very kind of standard, you've seen them, they're very similar, but maybe worded a little different, but it's, you'll see them in every financial statement you look at. And those kind of go through, all the group coming out, the ones that are different or important. On page twenty, kind of in the middle, we talked about the different types of funds that are specific to your town. And then page twenty-one at the top is a note about the budget process. And this is just saying that the town follows the standard budgeting process that's required by the state of Colorado. It started in October and finished in May or June, at the end of the year. And then if you have the opportunity, I guess, if you're not nervous already, get all through it out there. When you file your budget in December for the next year, so you'll be filing this December for the twenty twenty-six budget. If you get to the end of that year and it looks like you're overextending your budget or something, you have the opportunity to file a supplemental budget to make up that difference.
It just says we have to submit our proposed budget to the local government body by October fifteenth.
Well, you are the local government. Typically, they say you start your audit budget process in October. You guys deliberate over it for a couple of months and then issue your file. That that's basically what it's saying. This just talks about different definitions of some of the different things down at the bottom. It talks about your capitalization policy. So we're looking at what assets gets capitalized and appreciated. Anything five thousand greater would be capitalized as one individual thing. So if you buy, you know, a computer two thousand dollar computer, you're not going to capitalize and appreciate that, but you buy a six thousand dollar car, you know. Page twenty-two, again, that just follows up the capitalization policy and it tells you down here, so infrastructure, which would be the streets that we talked about, those would be depreciated somewhere between twenty-five and fifty years. And it tells you kind of different types of assets and what types of depreciation like they would have. Under the fund equity section, that just gives you some definitions on the different types of fund equity that's shown. Basically, you have typically restricted assets and unrestricted assets. Unrestricted assets are available for you guys to use as you see fit within that fund. A restricted asset would be something that's required that you hold back, kind of like you have a, on the water fund, you have a loan covenant that requires you to hold back a certain amount of money. So that would be a restricted asset. Page twenty-three, interfunded, they're just talking about that. The funds do interact with each other and come into hands. Have mine going back and forth. Net position, again, this just has a some more definitions related to that same unrestricted restrictive type thing. Use of estimates, it works for here that financial, there's always something that's estimated. Appreciate, it's always considered estimated because you have a card being lost five years, being lost ten years, depreciated all in five years. So it's kind of an estimated value. Deferred outflows and inflows, this is again a concept that relates back to that pension information. And it's just talking about that there are some things in the future that you may be receiving versus things that you may be able to pay out. The pension note, the topic danger funding board just talks about that you guys do participate in the fire and police statewide event plan. That's kind of the precursor to the note. There's a big amount of new. Cash and investments, this just talks about here, so in Colorado, like you and me, we have the we deposit money in the bank for insured up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars under FDIC insurance. Governmental units in Colorado, you get that protection, but then any money above that that's in the bank that would normally be uninsured is the Colorado, it's a state statute called the Colorado Public Deposit Protection Act. And what that means is any federal banking institution that is allowed to take government funds has to maintain a hundred and two percent of those funds investments in treasuries. So in other words, you know, they basically makes you fully insured. So in the, in the event of a bank failure, anything that they have owned in treasuries gets paid back to them by the federal government. That it automatically goes back to your account before anybody else's accounts because of the Colorado Public Deposit Protection. And so that's basically what this is just talking about, is talking about how much would be covered by FDIC insurance if you cover it under that. Investments, the state of Colorado operates in certain types of investments for governments. Typically, they have to be, I guess, as short of it is, they have to be like a time type investment. So a bond or CD or something like that. Five years or less maturity date. Those are the main. Those are the main requirements. Um, you guys do have an investment. Uh, well, part of the thing, you, you have money in the color trust, which is kind of more like a money market fund. So that is, uh, a qualified investment.
So that's our, our. Which, which investment is that the?
Trying to remember which account that was in adult.
There's always been, we've always had some debate as to whether or not it was a, a legal fund or.
That one's fine. The one that's the problem is on the next page.
Just opened my mouth too soon.
You have this, uh, this protective asset builder in there.
Yeah, that one.
There was money put in there, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, in twenty twenty-one. And basically that one has a ten-year life, so. Automatically you're outside of that. The second thing is, is it's an annuity, which is not an approved.
Right.
Type of investment.
Do we need to look at getting rid of that?
You know, the, the problem you have.
We're going to lose money. We're just now making money back.
The problem happens, right now it's underwater.
Yeah. I mean, we've gained some.
Those are, so it might be a deal where you kind of weigh it out. And, uh, once it hits your original value back or greater, then you could swap it with something else probably.
It's like, can I buy this in the bud?
Yeah, I, I, to be honest with you, I, I've never, I don't know what their recourse is for you to be outside of the investment policy. But, uh, other than to tell you to, you know.
Yeah, we've had it for about five years now.
But, uh, but I would definitely kind of keep an eye on that and maybe you're going to get this, you're going to kind of get this note every year. Until it's gone, one way or the other, whether you hold it to the full maturity or, or whether you, uh. Pull it out, but if it ever gets a cash value greater than this investment, I would recommend swapping it to something that's more appropriate.
Second, thirty-six.
It's like, that's the surrender value.
And that came the last year, so it may have increased a little this year. So restricted cash and investments, so this kind of is the next piece. The, the notes that are the bonds or whatever that you have payable for the water fund. They, the, one of the covenants of that is that we maintain this, uh, reserve account. And right now, the reserve account you have has nineteen thousand sixty-one, at least at the end of last year. Um, and I think that's where the thirty-eight dollars came from that increased the value was just the interest there. Um, this is, and there's, there's another note I'll point out there, that this is actually below the amount we're supposed to have in that. So, and I'm sure it has to do with the fact that the water fund's kind of underwater. So to say, to the general fund and, and it's passing money back over to that.
Gotcha.
Add money into this, uh, this restricted, uh. What repercussions it has.
Are you going to let us know how much we should have in there?
There is, I have.
Okay.
We'll be there in a couple pages. Um, so this next section under capital assets, this just shows our change in capital assets for the year. That there was really, I mean, there was one really big thing and then one other thing that qualified and. Uh, under infrastructure, you see the four hundred ninety-eight thousand, that is the street work now. And then, uh, private equipment and vehicles, there was six thousand, I believe it was, uh. Let's say it was a scraper or something that was purchased for this.
Oh, the town sweeper? No, the, that was this year.
I wanted to say this, that the description said scraper and I don't know, but I do know that is.
I think it was an attachment for the.
Oh.
For the backhoe.
For the backhoe, yeah. Yeah, they're not cheap.
Yeah. So anyway, those were the only two things on the, uh, capitalized. And then down below under the, we'll see it under additions there, the negative numbers, those are others that did some depreciation amounts in the categories. Um, then page twenty-six, these are the business type funds, the same thing. Uh, I want to say the only thing that was added. Was, uh, the trash fund has some kind of build up and shed.
We just, we built that this year though.
Yeah, we, we built that last year.
I think we had the funds, we, we.
There was an expenditure, it said shed for trash fund. Or trip, yeah, for twenty-nine thousand.
That would have been the shed for the, that would have been the shop out here.
Yeah, that's.
But we just had that built this last summer, dude.
Maybe you paid for it.
Meanwhile.
Oh, we did. Remember he had to pay for it in December of last year or whatever and then.
Oh, yeah.
They delivered it and then he didn't get it put up until it started warming.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
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 And he couldn't get it put up. It was laying out her pieces for a while until it got warm and he could actually put it up.
So, so that's showing up. Um, then down at the bottom, they just give a total of how much depreciation was in each of those different governmental funds on that second page we're looking at. Um, so now page twenty-seven, this is where we talk about the, the water ones. Um, so what we got here is, is it gives a description of what the original amount was. Uh, your interest rate you're paying on those. And then there's a schedule there in the middle to see kind of how much. Principal interest is paid each year and then the next five years and then make groups of years out of that. And then they go through twenty forty-five. Um, and so, yeah, so you'll see three lines up in that paragraph in the bottom, but fifty-six thousand six forty is the amount you're supposed to have in that. That debt reserve. And so there is a, I'll start work here that says you didn't meet the debt reserve requirement for twenty twenty-four.
Where's that?
Under, or through water. It's like this third sentence from the.
And we only had nineteen.
So, you know, probably would, there should be. I would think there should be something at least added to that each year as you go along. You know, you might not be able to put the full amount in one year, but. If you could have just shown something going in there other than just interest.
So is that something that we could, um, put within our budget?
Yeah, you can actually put a budget totally in there, put to, you know, to the, uh, the water fund restricted. Account. And I know with a lot of the USDA things, I, I did go back and look at the original one of this, but I want to say. A lot of those, you're supposed to put in one tenth of that amount for the first ten years.
Thirty-six thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
So, and I know this was done in twenty twenty-four, so you know, this is for twenty-year then. Um, but, uh. So I would think if you can at least get back to that one's hand at minimum.
But we wouldn't need to put the whole difference in right now.
Supposed to have it already there, but at least I know the cash flow is tight in that fund. So, um, it'd probably be, like, if we could at least show something.
We budgeted out half of it for this year and half of it for next year.
Well.
If you're looking at, um, what, eighteen thousand, lower than eighteen thousand.
You're already tight in that account though.
I know.
But, I mean, like you said, if we can at least do one tenth.
Yeah.
You know, and just start that.
The original fifty-six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fifty-six hundred dollars. It'll give, you know, take a few years, but you'll get there. Down at the bottom, note six, risk management, uh, that just talks about that you carry insurance for major, uh, issues. And then starting on page twenty-eight, um, this one I'm not going to read through a lot of. This is a note on the pension plan and it kind of covers a lot of the actuarial information that they use to come up with those numbers. And, and, you know, who's qualified to be in the plan and all of that kind of stuff. Uh, most of this information is, is kind of given to us by the pension plan itself, so. Um, it's just kind of reaverdated weird. That faces the page thirty-two. Uh, the bottom of there talks about no names and tendencies. Uh, first one is paper amendment. It was basically saying that if you're aware of that, that you believe in compliance with paper amendment. And then you have set aside, uh, a portion of your bond balance to cover your, uh, required. Uh, emergency reserve for the paper limit. Um, and then under grants, what this is talking about is like, in time, time, you may. Get grants and then those grants can be independently audited by the granting agency. And if they can, that their funds are extended property, they could request them back. Um, we don't really have anything going on like that, but it is out there that it could happen.
So in an instant like that, um, it would probably be a good idea to keep a spreadsheet, you know, attached. For each and every lump sum that we're receiving.
You should. Each time you get a grant, you need to contract that grant.
And usually the, whoever the grant is from, they'll give us, um, specifications on how they want.
Yeah, that's the guy that we keep talking to. And typically they request some sort of reported. All was on a year or something.
The grant that I am putting in here directly to try, hopefully I'm crossing my fingers. Um, to get fiber optic cable near Long Lake. And I'm starting on that next week and there's a spreadsheet that I have to fill out of, okay. This is, I'm going to talk to the internet company about it. This is what it's going to take. This is what the grant can do and all of this stuff. And, yeah, they have to have its numbers.
Sure. Um, the only other thing I guess to, to kind of throw out there as far as grants go, that's why I asked earlier if it was state money or federal money. If you, um, ever get a grant that's greater than a million dollars of federal funds, then that, we have to do additional. Or there's additional audit work that has to be done to report to the best.
Okay.
So, yeah, it used to be seven hundred and fifty thousand starting for twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Um, then that subsequent events, that just talks about that if there was anything that happened financially from the end of the year to today. That we were, that was detrimental, we wouldn't talk about it here, so listen to me. Noted. Page thirty-three, this is just more information that's required on that thing and stuff that we got through the bill. Um, basically it's just talking about, you know, how much the cover the table was, uh. Whether the contribution made. And then on page thirty-four, this gets into that other supplementary information we talked about. This is where we show your actual amounts compared to your budgeted amounts. And then whether there were the variance. Uh, the biggest thing that they look for here is you're not allowed to hold the standard loaded. Um, and so that's shown, uh, for the general fund here. One, two, three, lines up coming right in the bottom, uh, so the four hundred thirty thousand, you're actually under budgeted. Uh, your actual expenditure to a million one forty for this time. So.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, that's okay. And, 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 you know, and, and I guess just a lot of the reason that they do that is. Uh, you have public funds here that look like public, you're supposed to tell them how you spend in those funds. If you spend more than you know, then those things are kind of outside of the question. Um, page thirty-five is just an extension of that birthday, it breaks down the, the total per demonstration to shoot actual pairs from the budget. Uh, same thing on thirty-six. Uh, and then harder works on page thirty-seven. Um, page thirty-eight is the conservation trust fund compared to budget. And it was under budgeted by forty-two thousand, wasn't much that actually happened, you know. And then on page thirty-nine, the water fund. And, uh. It breaks it down into basically the same one you have to do your budget. So you'll see the, the. Operating expenses for under budget quite a bit and, uh. And, and the expenses were just about three, maybe over a hundred dollars. And then same thing on page four, you did the sewer fund. And then the trash fund is on page forty-one. And go for the chat, it'd be very difficult, I always thought. And then the last two pages is a copy of their pilot financial report that this is. Uh, three year office here. And then just kind of do a quick look at this to make sure that it somewhat kind of dies with. So that's all that's in on the report. Um, I think I've covered most everything. Questions or concerns under.
Um, is there anything that we need to change? Um. What do, what do we need to do differently? Anything or are we just pushing on?
The only comment I have would be on that was the, um.
Yeah, Eenee.
Oh, Eenee.
Yeah, when she said she went through it, um, to help get your urine thing, she said that through the monthly bank reconciliation to work on. As far as the end of that, that's fine. That would be the only, I, I didn't follow up with that as far as this year. Um, but that would be something to, to look.
Yeah, we've been, it's kind of been an issue. We've been, don't get my help of it, so.
So, so, yeah, that's the only thing that I, that I would recommend. And everything else, you know, seems to be working and picking up. So the numbers seem to be right, you're on the right track as far as the, uh. The business type accounts, the, the water should have been drafted on. Even on top of those, if you buy your, say, enough comfort. So you can go in the back.
All right. Last question, anybody? Yeah. All right. Well, thank you for coming out and going over that with us.
Yeah, so I don't know if you guys want to address that now so that I can get it sent on the screen.
Okay, yeah. So Dan, what we have on our, um, agenda is presentation of the audit report by David Kaufman. Do we need to make a motion to, um. Change that to approve the audit presentation?
You don't need to make a motion to change the agenda item. If you are comfortable approving. The audit in the form that it currently exists, then you just say motion to approve the audit as presented. If there's any adjustment, I mean, the, the whole reason it was kind of on the agenda is just in case there needed to be. Adjustments. If that is not the case, then just a motion to approve works.
Okay. Does, is everybody else good with that?
Yeah.
Naomi, do you, we're getting ready to, um, approve the, the, but, or the, um, audit? Do you, do you have any questions for David? Naomi's our mayor.
Hi. Um, not right now. It's, it's okay if I look it over and if I do.
Yeah, I'm available.
All right, I appreciate that.
I, I just, because I have the mic, I just wanted, like. It is very clear to me that all of you took the time to really dig into that and I think that's impressive. Um, I, you know, I don't have clients that don't really do that, but you guys very clearly did in a, in a great way. So just wanted to give you credit. It's, it's boring. Sorry, auditor. Um, but it's diffi, but like it's important and so it's very clear that you guys spent the time looking at it, so.
Yeah, thank you. So we just need to, um, get a motion to accept the audit as presented.
Yep. So I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the presentation of the audit report, um, by David Kaufman.
As presented.
As presented.
Rocco.
Naomi.
Yes.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yes.
Josie.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you very much, uh, David.
I will, uh, get this submitted to the state so they can. Don't get that.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave this obviously.
Okay, I'll take that.
Again, just David, if I can be of any help, but, but thank you for knowing the timelines and regulations and getting it submitted. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you. Okay, so I'll, you already started, so I'll let you go ahead and.
Okay.
Keep, keep going. keep, keep going. So our last item, um approve, disapprove the proposal from Western Cleanup Corporation for the demolition of two oh one and two fifteen Poplar for twelve thousand dollars. Um I think we need to add on there.
Signed off by the judge.
Well, yeah, what what was the outcome of all of that?
I was gonna say, if you guys wanted, um
Yeah, let me just give a quick update. Um and some of you heard a little of this earlier, today we filed, or at least mailed to file. Uh I don't want to get into too many details, but at least pendants, which is kind of the step to notify that if anyone happened to be trying to buy these properties right now, that they would have noticed that the town has a lot of liens and ability to demo, like, all that gets on the record, so that some day sale that none of us know about can't go through without that. Separate from that, we are just waiting on the judge to sign the order. I I was saying earlier, we thought that there was at least a chance that would happen today, it did not. Probably tomorrow, maybe Friday. It should not, like, this is a pretty routine, typical type of thing without like a a wrench that can get thrown in last moment, so you are good to approve the abatement. And and I think your motion can say as much, up to whatever amount, by whenever we approve it. From a secondary standpoint, which doesn't have to be part of the motion, but might be smart, is just I would recommend not to do any of the abatement before the judge signs that order. Again, like, we don't expect it to change, we, but just, it's one of those things where if the judge doesn't, you're not in as great of a position, so it's basically like, yes, all steam ahead, let's get the contractor ready to go. Let's have him ready to pull up and do it on Monday or Friday, whatever your kind of timeline is. But just that they don't necessarily start work until we are sure that the judge said go for it.
So we can approve or disapprove on it as is?
Yes, yes, you can totally authorize the work, it's just sort of whoever calls them and says hit the hit the first beam. That that maybe should wait till the judge orders it, so.
Okay, so
And then you were wanting to?
No, we'll just leave it as is.
Okay.
So I need a motion to approve or disapprove the proposal from Western Cleanup Corporation for the demolition of two oh one and two fifteen Poplar for twelve thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Western Cleanup Corporation for the demol- demolition of two oh one and two fifteen Poplar for twelve thousand dollars.
I'll second. Rocco?
Naomi?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Okay. Um so I, so I need um someone needs to make a motion to adjourn.
Yep, I'll make a motion to adjourn uh the meeting at seven oh six P M.
I'll second.
Naomi?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes. Okay.